Meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. Established by state law, the commission is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents. Development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, variance, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. The commission is a final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews, and below-market-rate housing agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with staff in our city's planning division. They are responsible for coordinating enforcement of the zoning ordinance and related policies. Thank you to everyone for joining this evening. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or member of the public. There will be an opportunity to speak publicly during general public comment, as well as for each agenda item. I will turn to our clerk this evening, Von Malathong, to explain how members of the public can participate during public comment periods.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. Regarding procedure for communication, I'm communicating. The commissioner will have their webcam on for the duration of the meeting. For those presenting on item tonight, agenda, we kindly ask that you also turn off, turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. A member of the staff will assign you a keyboard and mouse control if you are displaying the presentation. We then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation portion of your item. Unless called upon the chair during the public comment period, member of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling to tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keyboard to notify staff if you have a comment. I'm turning back to Vice Chair.
And thank you. So with that, this meeting is called to order. Ms. Malathong, can I ask you a question about the screen? Just in case anyone's tuning in through Zoom, is this? Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we'll move to item B, roll call. Commissioner Barnes?
Here.
Commissioner Eric?
Here.
Commissioner Farick?
Here.
Commissioner Riggs?
I'm here.
Commissioner Schindler?
Here.
And I am present as well. Chair Harris is absent, so I will be acting as chair this evening. So we'll move to item C, reports and announcements. Mr. Parada.
Thank you, Vice Chair Doe and members of the commission. So a few updates for the commission this evening, really some updates from the July 11th city council meeting. So on that meeting, the city council did introduce the ordinance that the planning commission had previously recommended regarding community amenities, ordinance, amendments, or updates, really some modifications to the appraisal review process and timing for the appraisal. So they'd introduced that on July 11th. It is tentatively planned to come back on August 14th for its second reading. At the same meeting, the city council approved the updated community amenities list. So the list of the planning commission reviewed in June is now active, and we're working on getting our website updated with that updated list. And that concludes my reports and announcements. Be happy to answer any commissioner questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, so we will move then to item D, public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed in the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful, and the commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore cannot respond to non-agenda issues other than to provide general information. Ms. Malathong?
I do not have anything, I don't have any public comment or hand raise at this point. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I think that's probably been enough time for people to consider if they want to speak. So we'll close. Item D, public comment. There are no items under item E, consent calendar. So we'll go ahead and move on to F, public hearing. And the first item we have is F1. Bear with me while I read this. Architectural control and use permits, Peninsula Innovation Partners LLC, 1350 to 1390 Willow Road, 925 to 1090 Hamilton Avenue, and 1005 1275 Hamilton Court. Consider and adopt resolutions to approve architectural control review for buildings and site improvements for the hotel, residential building on parcel six, and the standalone senior below-market-rate BMR housing building on parcel seven, associated with the approved Willow Village Master Plan Development Project. The master plan, including the general plan amendment, rezoning and zoning map amendment, vesting tentative maps, conditional development permit, development agreement, and BMR housing agreements, were approved by the city council on December 6th and 13th, 2022, and authorize up to 1.6 million square feet of office and accessory uses, with a maximum of 1.25 million square feet for office uses and the balance for accessory uses. Up to 1,730 dwelling units, including 312 BMR units, up to 200,000 square feet of retail and restaurant uses, and an up to 193-room hotel. The architectural control reviews by the planning commission check for conformance with the approved master plan, conditional development permit, development agreement, mitigation monitoring and reporting program, MMRP, for the certified environmental impact report, the RMU residential mixed-use, and O, office zoning districts, and other applicable requirements from the master plan governing documents. The requested actions implement the Willow Village Master Plan Project and are consistent with the MMRP for the environmental impact report prepared for the proposed project and certified by the city council on December 6, 2022. There's nothing further, therefore, nothing further is required under the California Environmental Quality Act. The planning commission is scheduled to review three separate architectural control packages and use permit requests for the hotel, residential building on parcel six, and standalone senior BMR housing building parcel seven. The hotel would include up to 193 rooms and total approximately 162,000 square feet in size, including approximately 23,000 feet of ground-floor retail and restaurant uses. The residential building on parcel six would include up to approximately 178 units, including 20 BMR units. The residential building on parcel seven would include 119 senior BMR units and one manager's unit. Additional architectural control packages will be considered at future meetings. The proposals include associated use permit requests for modifications to design standards anticipated by the master plan but not included in the conditional development permit. The use permit requests are generally summarized below. For the hotel, decrease the required interior setback and modify the projection allowances for awnings, signs, and canopies, including an allowance to encroach into the public access easement West Street. Parcel six, modify modulation requirements along the building facade fronting the publicly accessible park. Turn it to staff for updates and presentation. Mr. Turner?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Doe, for that introduction. I do have a brief presentation followed by a presentation by the applicant. If I can get my presentation up. The other presentation. Sorry, this is the next item. All right, thank you, Von. So again, this is the Willow Village architectural control packages for the hotel, parcel six and parcel seven. Next slide, please. It's the recommended format for tonight's meeting. I will go over a brief introduction of the project. It's largely going to be a review of the previous meeting and the master plan itself. Then we'll go into a presentation by the applicant to talk a little bit more about the specific projects before you tonight. Then we will answer any initial commissioner questions, move to public comment, move back to the dais, and then ultimately look for an action on tonight's projects. Next slide, please. So staff introduction. Next slide. So just to recap, this is the Willow Village site. It's approximately 59 acres bounded by Willow Village, or Willow Road to the west, the life science bonus district to the east, the Dumbarton rail corridor to the north, and the hedge- hedgey right-of-way in Mid Peninsula High School to the south, along with other life science buildings. Next slide, please. The site is approximately 59 acres and consists of existing office and warehouse uses. A master plan, conditional development permit, and development agreement were approved by the city council in December of last year. The project redevelopment of the site approved up to 1.6 million square feet of office and accessory uses, 1,730 dwelling units, and 857,000 square feet of open space, 360,000 of which would be publicly accessible. Next slide, please. So the CDP requires subsequent approval of architectural control plans. ACPs are intended to clarify and implement the conceptual designs of the individual parcels within the Willow Village site. So these designs were generally reviewed during the review of the master plan. And the three projects tonight are the hotel, parcel six, which is a residential building, and then parcel seven, which is the standalone senior below-market-rate housing project. Slide, please. Parcels six and the hotel have some use permit requests. The bayfront districts allow design standards to be modified through the approval of the use permit. The CDP itself approved many modifications to the design standards of the office and RMU districts. And these use permits are intended to clarify modifications that were conceptually approved of through the master plan process. And it's important to note that the designs have not changed substantively since the master planning process. And with that, I will turn it over to the applicant.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Good evening. Chair Doe, commissioners, city staff. Thanks for scheduling this meeting. We're here once again to, do we have our presentation up yet? Don't want to look at the back of my head. There we go. Okay, we're here once again to move on some key parts of Willow Village. And specifically, three.
So, yeah, through the chair. If we could just pause the presentation for a second, we'll get through these technical difficulties. So if the applicant could just hang tight for a minute. And for those potentially watching remotely, we'll have the screen up in the council chambers here shortly. If you could just bear with us for a few minutes.
Working again? Here we go. Are we ready to go again? Okay. I'll use this, I'll work at this screen. As you can see, this is the existing site. This is our famous before picture. And just to remind you, when we took on the project, we really wanted to focus on good architecture and feel in the community. And so we engaged six different architects. We're going to hear from two of them on three buildings today. So it was very important that we had a plan that was complementary, really focused on the variety of people we're trying to serve in the community. Obviously, office component related to meta, but all of the residents were adding 1,730 units. We want that experience to be very good. A lot of retail, a grocery store, neighbors who really are looking forward to the services we're going to provide for shopping, groceries, restaurants, and the like, as well as visitors on the hotel. So today, we're going to talk about the hotel, one of the residential parcels that's adjacent to our community park, a real key park property for the arrival experience into this community, and then the senior affordable, another key element to, you know, everything we're experiencing in California is affordability and dealing with our seniors. So next slide. So this timeline is just to show, highlight once again, the significant process we went through. This is just what happened in 2022. I decided not to show the stuff from 2014 on. Next slide. And for 2023, this body heard the office campus and the grocery store in our last meeting. Today, we have the hotel and parcel, the residential parcel, and the senior affordable parcel. For the hotel, we've got Softy Architects will make that presentation and walk the commission through their thinking as they go around that building. And then we'll follow up with the Piatac architects, who designed what we call our park residential, right next to the community park, and the adjacent parcel, parcel seven, next to it, which is the senior affordable. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Jaren Lubin, who will be on Zoom from Softy Architects.
Thanks, Paul. Can you hear me okay?
A little louder, please.
Can you hear me all right?
Commissioners, can you hear him loud enough? Okay. Go ahead, Jaren.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Thanks for the introduction. I hope you can hear me all right, calling from our headquarters in Somerville, Massachusetts. And sorry, I can't be there tonight. I'm going to be explaining the design of the hotel, which is clearly located in this illustration on Plan North.
If I can interrupt, we're having trouble hearing, actually.
Should I just try to speak louder?
Let's try that. Thank you.
How's that? Can you hear me any better?
That's a lot better, thanks.
So my name is Jaren Lubin. I'm here from Softy Architects. I will be talking about the hotel, which is just to the west of the town square. This is an orientating map that maps on top of the illustration and photo that Paul just shared with you all. Next. Next, please. So the hotel is located to the west of the town square. It's highlighted in this drawing here on the last meeting that I shared with you, the design of the town square, which is at the center of the page. And the hotel has a very unique position related to the town square as a kind of western flank and border to this very public and communal space. Next. In terms of a building typology, it holds the corner on Willow and Main Street. It's a courtyard design at the center of which has this really beautiful garden, which I'll show you in a few slides, and very animated retail frontages, activated frontages along Main Street, Willow Road, and great frontages along the town square. Next. The first view of the hotel is just opposite the market, which was also presented to you in our last meeting by one of our architect colleagues. This is the arrival to Willow Village on Main Street. Next, you can see a very clear indication of the corner condition. And we worked hard that this entire corner would be open, to express and be activated. You see here the F and B, the dining of the hotel and the lobby of the hotel, express the corner of, and the arrival to Willow Village. Next. You then rise up into the town square, and the hotel is right behind us. And on the left, the port cochere is a key feature of the hotel. It's on the left-hand side of the screen, and it carries the same language or a similar language to the retail pavilion that we shared with you, that's on the south side of the town square, and also some of the other themes of planting and landscape that frame and give character to this public space. Next. And so here you see the view to the hotel from the town square. The port cochere is immediately in front of you. On the left-hand side, you see some of the activities that are on the ground level of the hotel. There's some F and B and food and beverage and retail spaces facing the town square. On the right-hand side of the screen, you also see some of those activities, activation, again, some food and beverage, retail opportunities. On the second floor of the hotel, on the right-hand side of the screen, you also see some trees planted on top of the building. And this is actually the amenity deck for the hotel guests. At the center of the screen, you see the garden, which would be animated on three sides of the ground level of the hotel, by the lobby, by the dining spaces, and all the amenities of the hotel kind of spill into this central garden that everybody can see from the town square. And it's accessible for the guests of the hotel, as well as anybody visiting Willow Village. Next. I'm now going to pass the presentation to my colleague, Marcial, who's going to take you through a brief presentation on the residential parcel.
Oh, Piatac Architects, can you hear me? There we go, sorry. My name is Marcial Chow. I'm the lead principal at Piatac Architects, leading the design of the two multifamily residential buildings that are part of the Willow Village mixed-use development. I'll be presenting the park residential building, which is parcel six, and the adjacent affordable senior building. Next. Park residential building is located at the southern border of Willow Village, located along Park Street between the community park on the west and the affordable senior on the east, and another public park further east. The building contains 178 units in a seven-story building, five levels over a two-story podium. Next. Park residential building is organized around two linear residential massings connected by a central amenity bridge, creating two courtyards, one active on the west side, which maximizes solar exposure and houses the swimming pool and related activities, and opens towards the park. The other is a passive courtyard on the east, which houses quiet seating and lounging areas. The residential mass fronts Park Street to reinforce the street wall. Next. This is the west elevation facing the community park. A lot of attention was placed on ground-floor activation via use of transparent glazing at the main building lobby, located on the left corner of this image. The two-story townhomes line the remaining portion of the ground floor facing the park. The courtyard above opens to the community park, maximizing solar exposure, and much attention has been paid to articulate the roofline via south-facing slope roofs, which allow for placement of solar PV panels. Please note, the park design depicted in this image is a placeholder, since the park is currently in design. Next. This is the view as one enters Park Street from the west. The main glazed residential lobby is at this corner. The facade along Park Street incorporates upper-floor stepbacks with loft units to help minimize the apparent mass of the building. Next. Park Street, the Park Street sidewalk, which is an important pedestrian connection between the two public parks, is activated via ground-floor townhomes with raised entry stoops and beautiful landscaping. Use of warm materials complement the structural concrete of the podium and glazing to create an inviting streetscape. Next. The two buildings were designed together, taking advantage of a mid-block alley where parking garage entrances and utilities are strategically centralized to keep them out of the Park Street frontage. This image shows a continuation of the residential open spaces in the two buildings, which visually connect the public parks on either side. Thank you, and I'm going to now move to present the affordable building. Okay, next. The senior affordable building contains 120 units in a six-story building, five-over-one one-story podium. As mentioned before, it is located on, next slide, sorry. As mentioned before, it is located on the southern border of the village, flanked by Park Street residential on the west and a public park on the east. Next. Park Street Presidential on the west and a public park on the, on the east. Next. The triangular lot allowed us to concentrate all the residential massing along one continuous rectangular massing along Park Street to help reinforce, reinforce the street wall along Park Street, with a landscape courtyard and a one-story pavilion filling out the remainder of the triangle. This is a view of the Park Street elevation. The ground floor is activated by a continuous pedestrian arcade with transparent glazing containing all the various amenity programs serving the seniors at the ground floor. Use of grouped recessed balconies in the upper floors promotes social connection between neighbors and also provides massing articulation of the facade. Upper floors stepbacks further reduce the apparent massing and building height on the street. In addition to private terraces on the upper floor units, there is a shared common deck at the very east end of the building with great views of the bay. Next. This is an image showing the ground floor arcade, which helps to widen the pedestrian sidewalk and provides covered shelter space for the seniors to gather and feel connected to the street life. Fully transparent glazing helps connect the inside of the building to the arcade in addition to lush landscaping. This is the view from the, from East Street at the intersection of East Street and Park Street. This is an important intersection since it provides safe, controlled pedestrian crossings of Park Street to reach the rest of the village. A large sidewalk buildout is proposed to help reduce the crosswalk width. The main building entrance is located here, denoted by the vertically glazed elevator lobbies at the upper floors, providing views down East Streets and towards Main Street. Next. These next several slides will help to describe the amenity programming for the senior residents. The ground floor has a continuous glazed wall separating the covered arcade with a circulation spine, which helps to bring in natural light into the ground floor. Next. Here is a blow up of the west side of the ground floor, showing the main entry, the mail lounge and elevator core, the manager's office, resident service offices are located here as well with a small conference room. Next. This is a blow up of the east side of the ground floor, showing the health service offices, bicycle room, multipurpose community room. The community room has an indoor-outdoor connection to a private outdoor gathering area on the east. Next. The second floor podium level contains a community pavilion located within the landscape courtyard. Next. This community pavilion has an enclosed gathering space at this level with a kitchen with indoor-outdoor connections. There is also a landscape roof deck on top of the pavilion that provides additional common outdoor space for the senior residents. The landscape courtyard contains multiple seating areas and gathering spaces and gets plenty of southern light. Next. And this is the reason why we are all here, to build affordable housing for our most precious resource in our community, our seniors. Thank you. I'll give the podium back to Paul.
Thanks, Marcial. That concludes the presentation and we'll take some, some questions. But one thing I just wanted to reemphasize, which is kind of fun as a developer, is you've got three different buildings and they each have a different ground floor experience and a vibrant and active ground floor experience. Most of the times, that's one of the hardest things to do in multifamily and high-density projects, is to have that interactive nature throughout a project. And so if you think about the hotel being tied into the town square, it's got visitors, it's got residents, neighbors, shopping, office visitors, a lot of activity there, which will happen all the time. As we move down to the park, it's next to the, the Park Residential, it's next to the community park, which by, by its own nature is going to create its activity. And we've put deliberately some living units there with stoops to the concept of eyes on the, eyes on the public space for safety and also activity. And then for the seniors, we've got all of their ground floor activities. That's also there for their safety. They live up, up above, but for a good vibrant senior life, we want that interaction to take place there and always be there. And so for us as developers, it's really a, it's, it's a privilege to be able to put together something where you're not struggling to get that ground floor activated with retail or other. So I hope you can appreciate that. We spent a lot of time trying to make that human scale to, that wherever people touch the building, they can feel good and the like. So with that, we'll open it for whatever's next on your agenda. Kyle, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and with that, we can take any initial questions of staff or the applicant.
Great, thank you. Any clarifying questions? Commissioner Eric.
Thank you. I believe through the chair, this is a question for Mr. Lubin about the hotel. And apologies if this information was included and I just didn't catch it, but the ground floor of the hotel, are there planned entrances to the hotel from either Willow Road or Main Street? Or is the only entrance to the hotel from the town square side?
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Great. So the primary entrance to the hotel is from the town square via the port cochere. So you'll get dropped off or you'll arrive as a pedestrian or from bicycle from the town square. You'll enter through the garden and then there's kind of an open access to the check-in facilities directly off of, so we're funneling everyone through the garden as a concept to enter the hotel.
Okay, thank you. I might have more comments later, but that concludes my question.
Any other clarifying questions before we move to public comment? All right, well then, let's move to public comment. For that, we'll turn to Ms. Malathong.
Thank you, Vice Chairdo. As a reminder, member of the public can press the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone alternatively. For those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keyboard to notify staff that you have a comment. For any member of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another commentator during this meeting, please inform staff at the start of the meeting. A thought of public comment and staff will ensure that other commentators speak after you have finished your comment. And then if you are attending in person, there's a car in the, in the back there, please complete that and hand it over to me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let us know if there's any commenters.
At this point, there's nobody raised their hand or a comment card that I have received. Thank you.
Okay, I think maybe that was enough time while you were giving the instructions. So let's close public comment and take it back to the dais for a discussion and ultimately Would anyone like to start?
Sure.
Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. I guess I'll address this to Paul, and it won't surprise you at all that I'm going to ask about transportation. So I just want to have a sense before we vote tonight, whether there's been any progress that we don't know about, about public transportation and in particular, cross bay transportation.
The, the transportation issue as part of, as part of the environmental impact report, we were, and the city's ordinances, we were required to have a really extensive study of traffic and all our alternative means and methods to get people around in our transportation management program. So we have Metta's, probably the finest shuttle system in the Bay Area as a key component, but there are, we will have a community shuttle associated with the grocery store. And that will open when the grocery store does open. And it will not only take in consideration of the Belle Haven neighborhood, but also the Bayfront neighborhood that goes down past Marsh Road. We'll have extensive bike programs and, and other activities to try to get cars off the street. We've, you know, eliminated parking on the street and have done that in, in structures with shared parking. And the shared parking allows us to be a lot more efficient and build a lot fewer spaces. So it's a combination of a lot of things to try to reduce traffic. Unfortunately, we don't have a big move connecting East Bay. There are things that we, we, that Meta and, and our team are willing to outreach to the SAM Trans on, on various ideas that they might have to use the Dunbaron corridor, but there's nothing has gelled now. So that'll take a lot of dialogue moving forward to see if there can be ways that we can add to the transportation issues that are additive to what we've already baked into Willow Village with the additional entrances and exits to the east and creating the, the access down to O'Brien, so.
Well, I want to make sure that I acknowledge Metta's continuing effort to provide shuttles, particularly for the immediate neighborhood and for short runs. Unfortunately, not so much to Menlo Park downtown, but I guess to Palo Alto and to Redwood City. As we all know, the expressway has a lot of trouble handling the traffic that's already there. And we're going to rejuvenate 1.3 million square feet with a fair amount of housing as well as office. And of course, it's in the midst of a growth area to begin with. So regional transportation remains out of reach. And I, I don't think that's, that can be in any way laid at the feet of Metta, but it is an unfortunate situation that colors how we look at major projects. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Commissioner Faric.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. I think I'll start with four, maybe it's a staff question. On page 17, table six, the, the open space calculations were a little bit confusing. I'm wondering if you can kind of shed some light on that, how the, the required open space doesn't total, I don't know if I'm just looking at it wrong, but the total required and proposed doesn't seem to align with figures above. So I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding what the right figures are. It's on page 17 in case, for parcel seven, proposed open space.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good question. It is a little bit confusing to, to explain. So in the RMU district, projects are required to have a general amount of open space for the project, but it's also required to have open space for the residences. And that can either be provided as private open spaces like balconies or common open spaces, such as like the pool deck and other common areas like that. This table, it's, it's hard to make a table when there's a mixture of the two. So the minimum private open space of 9,600 square feet, that would be if the project only provided private open spaces to meet the requirement. Similarly, the, the minimum common open space would be if the project only provided common open space to, to satisfy the requirement. So, but there's a mixture of the two. Basically, there's a calculation where whatever you don't provide in the form of private open spaces, you have to provide 1.25 square feet of common open space to make up the difference. So the applicant is providing a little over 2,800 square feet of, of private open space, little, almost 10,000 square feet of common open space. And then together, that gets us to almost 13,000 square feet of open space, which counts towards the minimum required and open space for the parcel as a whole.
Okay. And so then it does, when, you know, with the combination of private and common open space meet that 1.25 square feet or better requirement?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, that is a tricky one to represent in a table for sure. I'm curious why the, the total under required open space that's total required slash proposed, that figure 8,026, is that what the, this parcel's minimum number combo is? Or I'm not sure what that represents.
Sorry, should I explain that a little bit more? So the minimum required open space is based on the lot size. If I remember correctly, I want to say it's 25% of the lot size. So the 8,000 square feet is 25% of the lot size. That's the open space they're required to provide. And that can be, like I said, the, the common open space, the private open space, but it also can include areas not covered by the building, kind of general open space on the ground floor. So they're required to provide 8,000 square feet based on lot size. And then the private and common open spaces factor into that.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's helpful. I think I get it now. Good to know. Just was wondering if I was having a math challenge that I was unaware of. Okay, so I have another one probably also for you, if I can just move to that. And then I'll also have some questions of the applicant. So I'm a little less up to speed than probably the commissioners that have been involved in this project for several years. But page 19, there's the lead ambition to build sustainable buildings and it has higher level of ambition for larger projects, which I understand. But I guess for the smaller buildings, is there an ambition, I don't know about getting up, is there a requirement that applicants now have to have them certified? Or is there an ability to aspire to a higher sustainability level than Silver, but not necessarily have it certified, like, or differently certified, like well building challenge or other less, I don't know, sometimes expensive, although well's expensive too. Because I see why sometimes smaller buildings don't get certified because it's this kind of cumbersome high bar.
Yeah, so currently, under the Bayfront zoning districts, LS Office and RMU, the only way to meet this requirement is through LEED. At one point, we were, LEED certification, that is, at one point, we were working on putting together a way to certify, not certify, but confirm that the building was the equivalent of the LEED Silver Gold levels. At the moment, there aren't any other requirements as far as, you know, requiring LEED Silver, but then pushing for, you know, more sustainable, but maybe not quite gold. There's nothing in, in that range. That would have to be, you know, looked at at the city council level and come to us as a, an ordinance update. But currently, projects have to certify LEED to, to meet that requirement.
Okay, thank you. I think the next couple of questions I have are for the applicant. So through the chair, may I ask, Paul, can you come back up? Or, great. Hi. You're changing out. Great, hi, nice to see you. Thank you for H.T. Harvey's Bird Safe Design. That was quite an extensive report that was included and really interesting. On page 96, kind of toward the beginning to page 98, there was reasons for waivers for certain requirements. And I'm wondering if, if you could just kind of explain a little bit more about what, what the conditions are that require that. I saw that H.T. Harvey understood and supported the need for them, but I'm just, would love to understand it more from your perspective.
Thank you. And the city set up its, its, its quote waiver criteria specifically because not every situation fits every- fits every building, and so you essentially have to have a functional equivalency so you can solve for various Bird Safe Design attributes and measures by using kind of a prescribed, you know, list or a functional equivalent. And so, I'll go back to that in a moment and refer to it and come back to you potentially, but just wanted to let you know, there's essentially a functional equivalency that as you're designing buildings, there may not be a specific element that works in a certain situation. So, the waiver process and staff can address this for you as well, has been set up to allow you to achieve the same goal, but in different ways.
Got it. That's helpful. Thank you. The rest of my notes or comments, so I'll save those for later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick, for your questions. Say one. Commissioner Eric.
Hello. I want to first start by acknowledging that I appreciate all of the street-level activation that has been done in the comments that Paul made along those lines. My comments, I guess, pick up on where my question left off, which is, it wasn't clear to me from the designs whether or not the ground floor of the hotel will have any sort of dining or retail, but I would love to see or at least understand why it can't be done, some sort of entrance from either Willow or Main Street. It feels a little bit like we're blocking off the community by, you know, if someone wants to enter, whatever's on the ground floor of that hotel, forcing them to go all the way around into the, obviously, the town square would be nice, but it feels potentially a little bit more welcoming to have an entrance from the ground floor. There might be reasons why that's not possible, and I'd be curious to understand those. In the case of the, of the housing that we saw, it makes more sense to me from a housing perspective that people might not want to live with their residents, you know, entering and exiting onto Willow Road, which is very busy, but for a hotel and retail situation, that feels like an opportunity to bring in the community a little bit more.
Commissioner Eric, thank you, and I may ask Jaren to comment as well. Just clarification, there are two entrances to the hotel. First, obviously, and very intentional, and Jaren can talk about this, in terms of drawing people into Willow Village, drawing them into Town Square, so that very, you know, primary entrance. There's also an entrance to the restaurant through which you could enter the hotel as well, at Main and West Streets. So we do have direct access from Main, mid-block, across from the market to be able to draw you in. We also have significant site work that we'll be doing to address sea level rise, and particularly at that location at Willow and Main. And so, in terms of being able to locate, you know, entrances, exits, it becomes a very significant operational challenge there. And so what we've done is we've identified those key points on Main, at West, as well as the entry. So just wanted to clarify that there are, in fact, two. Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Okay. That's helpful detail on all fronts, and I think that's mostly what I wanted to ask. I think the designs of all three are beautiful, and I appreciate all of the work that has gone into them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. Actually, I have a follow-up question on that, and it's not on these buildings, but just, that was helpful to know, but that entrance on Main, across from the grocery store, and because of the grade change going from street level to the raised site, can you remind us again where the entrance is to the grocery store, all the entrances? Is it, because it obviously has the same challenge of navigating the grade change?
And there's the site essentially, well, I'll let Paul cover it.
Yeah, there's an entrance at the corner of Main and West, and then on the, on the, what I would call mid-block of parcel two, there's entrance right where Center Street comes down to the project, there's entrance to the garage, and there's street-level parking in the garage, and the grocery store has an entrance right there. And then there's a second story of parking, and there will be an elevator and likely an escalator to get you into the grocery store entrance. So, the main pedestrian entrance will be at West and Main, and that south, excuse me, that would be on parcel, that would be the north-east corner. And then, just continuing down West Street, you'll see another entrance where our market walk ends, where the elevator brings people down from the parking structure. So there's an entrance there, and it's right at Center Street. So there's vehicle access at Center Street, there's also vehicle access directly across from that, off of Willow Road, to get people in there. So that's how it'll be there. Because, just a little tidbit, Willow Road can't be raised, it's out to Caltrans Road. The site has to come up five feet for sea level rise, so there's a five-foot grade differential from Willow Road to West. And so that's why it's very problematic to do an entrance on Willow.
Thank you. So when you're walking on Willow, sorry, when you're walking on Willow there, it's five feet.
Yeah, you'll see, you'll see.
There's something escaping.
We have some great landscaping and the like, and then as you come up, to make it feel good while you're there, but that's the only way we can, we can deal with the constraints of, it's sort of a 3D Rubik's Cube that we have to navigate. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the commission?
I'll just make my comments now.
Sure.
Kind of wrapping up.
Sure.
Yeah, I just would, you know, by way of comments, very excited about the 193-room hotel for both, you know, the functional, practical element, but the design and then the great revenues to the city that that will provide. The other thing I liked, just sort of by way of comment about the Bird Safe Design report, was how it gave such an exciting kind of visual of the community, you know, pavilion, which I know isn't on today's docket, but I just thought that was a really great way to kind of view it, and I'm excited about that building, too. And then, I really liked the senior housing. It kind of reminds me of a ship, and it's tough to build a nice-sized project on a skinny triangle, and so I thought that was a really great use of that space, considering the occupants and maybe the type of open space that they could best use. It made total sense, and I like that there's a nice substantial community space, too. It's always nice to be able to have some places like that in residential communities like that to kind of have a classes or family events or whatever. So really thoughtful on those parts of the design. Yeah, so, just excited about it. If you're ready, Chair, for a motion, I'm happy to make one, unless others want to comment further.
No, please go ahead. I think we've given everyone plenty of time. If you would, is that a motion that you would like to make?
I'm happy to do so, but I'm looking at Commissioner Riggs, who might, I think you're reaching for the microphone as I began to talk, so I don't want to jump ahead.
I have five or six brief comments to make, but it shouldn't impede you getting things started.
Well, okay, then, I shall make a motion to approve, oh my gosh, I'm going to have to read the report, the header, it's a long one. Architectural control and use permits. Is that, sorry, I just want to make sure I'm couching it right. I know sometimes those are important to correctly word, motions for this sort of thing. So architectural control and use permits for Peninsula Innovation Partners for parcel six, parcel seven, and, what's the other one? The hotel. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and I apologize, Commissioner Riggs, for not, please.
No, my light wasn't on yet. Ms. Farrick is just quite astute. So, I did want to respond specifically to the five actions tonight, and I felt this way before, historically, a couple of decades ago, there's something about voicing approval of the architectural work of two of the best architects in the United States. Anyway, I'm pleased to do that for the design of the hotel, and certainly approve the modification to the design standards for the office zoning district. Similarly, the design for the residential building on parcel six, I think it's going to be another fantastic building, and again, the modification for design standards in RMU. And then finally, the design for the senior building, and with just an add-on statement of appreciation to Meta, to have worked out, it's not just the agreement with someone to build it, but it's finding a separate site to do it, which has often been a challenge that I've been aware of since '01 or so. So I just wanted to express that appreciation. I would like to ask if we are going to vote on these three recommendations. Would it be possible to separate them? Because I will feel in a position to vote for one of them rather than all three.
Is that a question to staff, Commissioner Riggs?
I guess it should be.
Yes, so the, there are three separate actions. One for the resolution for the hotel, one for the parcel six, and one for parcel seven. They can certainly be done in one motion, or be separated, however you see fit.
Through the chair, as the maker of the motion, I'm happy to make those separately if that's more agreeable to the commissioners.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Let's do that, Commissioner Farrick. And just before we do that, I would just insert my comments. I agree with Commissioner's comments on the architecture, and I also appreciate Commissioner Riggs bringing up the issue of regional transportation and the impact that this development will have on the community in terms of connectivity, but however, that the vote today is regarding the architectural control. I just do hope that as a community, we can continue to address those connectivity issues and appreciate that the shuttles, the part that they play in addressing that. I'll turn it back over to you, Commissioner Farrick, to...
Sure. Why don't I amend the motion to just start with the hotel? So, I propose, or I move that we approve, oh my gosh, where'd it go? Architectural control and use permits for the hotel parcel.
Thank you. So first...
Through the, through the chair. Sorry for interrupting. I just want to confirm that that is as proposed by staff in the staff report.
Yes, I mean, as we've...
For attachment A.
Yes. Yes? Was there a different version that I should be aware of?
No, just in case there were any amendments that you wanted to propose. So if it's per the staff report, per attachment A, that would, that'd be all you need to say.
As city council once famously did, approved a project from this DS, with the exception that it should be a single-story building.
Oh, that would be a little bit of a modification.
Yes, that was historical.
A first from Commissioner Farrick. Say?
I'm happy to second the motion for the hotel.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Resolution for the hotel.
So, with that, if there's no further questions, we'll move to a vote to approve the architectural control plans and requested use permit for the hotel.
I'm sorry, ma'am. May I offer clarification? I think we're bifurcating these into attachments, because with a specific resolution, there are architectural control plans, and then there's use permits associated with each attachment. So if I were to just offer to the Chair, if we voted on each attachment, attachment A, attachment B, attachment C, we could parse these out one by one, because each attachment has some nuances to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Let me just make sure I understand.
Yeah, so that's the order in which the, sorry to cut in, Commissioner, the, that's the same kind of thing, I think it's just called something different. Looking at page five of the staff report.
Through the chair to offer some clarification. Yeah, so the resolution would capture both the architectural control and the use permits. There's no need to separate them between the architectural control and the use permits. So, for example, attachment A, the resolution for the hotel parcel would include architectural control and the use permits for the hotel parcel, as they're just attachments to the resolution.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. Commissioner Barnes, does that?
Yes. Attachment A is inclusive of both of those, so as long as we're voting on the attachment, that covers what is in the attachment, so.
And that was my understanding, is that? But thank you, thank you so much for clarifying that. So, we're voting now. Commissioner Barnes?
On attachment A, yes.
Attachment A, yes, voting on attachment A. Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
No.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
I am also a yes, so that's five yeses and one no, and the motion to approve attachment A, the architectural control plans and use permit for the hotel, passes. So now, we'll move to take action on attachment B, and that's for, to approve the architectural control plans for the parcel six residential building and the requested use permits. Anyone like to make a motion regarding that one?
I don't need to hog up. Oops, so others are welcome to jump in on that.
Commissioner, thank you. First from Commissioner Schindler.
Yes, I enthusiastically move that we adopt a resolution to approve the elements of attachment B, architectural control and the requested use permits, as it relates to the mixed-use residential. This is a critical project. The plans look fantastic. The variance that the use permit modifications are completely aligned with the master plan and the spirit of the project, and I wouldn't want anything to stand in its way.
Thank you. A second from...
Through the chair, just to confirm, as recommended by staff?
As recommended by staff. As written and recommended by staff. Thank you.
I'm happy to second.
Second from Commissioner Eric. And with that, with a first from Commissioner Schindler, a second from Commissioner Eric, we'll vote on attachment B, which is the parcel six residential building. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
No.
And Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
I am also a yes, so that's five yeses, one no. So, the resolution to approve the architectural control permits and use permits for parcel six residential building passes. And finally, we'll move to attachment C, adopt a resolution to approve the architectural control plans for the senior BMR housing building. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt the resolution to approve the architectural plan.
Thank you.
For attachment C, per the staff report.
Per the staff report. Okay. First from Commissioner Riggs, a second from Commissioner Farrick. We'll now vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, so that's six yeses, and the resolution to approve the architectural control plans for the senior BMR housing building on parcel seven passes. So, with that, believe that we... So with that, believe that we can close item F1. Thank you for your time this evening to the applicant. And I believe that moves us to item F2. Item F2 is a general plan circulation element in El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Amendments, City of Menlo Park. Consider amendments to the City of Menlo Park General Plan Circulation Element and El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan to allow for the City Council to consider closing a portion of Santa Cruz Avenue and public alleys such as Ryan's Lane to vehicle traffic. The proposed amendments would modify the street classifications in the General Plan Circulation Element to incorporate an alley designation within the local access street classification and allow for the City Council to consider street closures within the Main Street, such as Santa Cruz Avenue, and local access alley classifications. I apologize, I might be... In additional locations to the Central Plaza identified in the specific plan. Additional clarifying text amendments would be required in both the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan and General Plan Circulation Element for internal consistency and consistency between each plan. The proposed amendments would be limited to minor circulation changes and modifications to public space and would not increase the development potential of the General Plan or El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan. The Planning Commission is a recommending body to the City Council on the proposed amendments. If the City Council approves the proposed amendments, the City Council may consider actions to close the street segment and alley as a separate action. The City Council certified a program-level environmental impact report, EIR, as part of approving the general plan update on November 29, 2016, and certified a subsequent EIR to the general plan program EIR as part of adopting the housing element update on January 31, 2023. The City Council certified a different program-level EIR as part of approving the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan on June 5, 2012. Each proposed amendment has been evaluated regarding the impacts identified in its respective certified EIR, and that analysis has found that the proposed amendments would not result in new impacts or an increase in severity of previously identified impacts or would not result in new impacts or an increase... I am so sorry. I am tripping over these. Or otherwise require additional environmental review or processing under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. An addendum to each certified EIR has been prepared as authorized under CEQA to describe the proposed amendment and its relationship to the original approval and its already-recognized environmental impacts. Determine that the proposed general plan and downtown specific plan amendments, as outlined in each addendum, are consistent with the respective certified EIR and that no further environmental review is required under CEQA Guidelines Sections 15162 and 15164. Mr. Prada, any updates or presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chair Doe and members of the commission. Staff does have a presentation for the commission this evening. So once that's up, I can get started. It's a relatively brief presentation. I can, while we're pulling that up, get started here with just a few updates, though. So we did receive, and the commission received it directly, an item of correspondence prior to or post-publication of staff report, but prior to this evening's meeting, relaying concerns about the potential for more permanent or long-term street closures, but relaying some general support for the streetery using parking spaces. So with that, if I can get the next slide up. Thank you, Vaughn. So the meeting format, so if you can go back one, there's a staff presentation, which we're in the midst of here. I did just provide staff's update regarding public comments. And then following this presentation to provide an overview of the proposal this evening, the Planning Commission can or should ask at that time clarifying questions of staff, then open up the public hearing for public comment, and then close public comment for Planning Commission discussion and ultimately a recommendation. So just to make it clear this evening, the ask in front of the Planning Commission is for the Planning Commission to review these proposed amendments to the city's general plan circulation element and the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan. I will probably shorten those to general plan or circulation element or specific plan because it's going to get a little wordy throughout. So hopefully that sets some context there. The recommendation would be to the City Council, who would be the final decision-making body on any amendments to the two plans. There are two resolutions before the Planning Commission's evening, so there would need to be individual actions on each resolution. Each resolution would be to amend each plan, the general plan or the specific plan individually, and includes the California Environmental Quality Act findings related to the addendum for each specific plan. So they are unique, two separate actions. And with that, if we can move to the next slide. So a little bit of background this evening. So the city is in the process of developing an outdoor dining or streetery program. This was reviewed by the City Council through a study session in February of this year. The program would ultimately replace the current temporary outdoor use permits or TOPs. And as part of its study session in February, the City Council discussed some more detailed design guidelines and standards, as well as expressed an interest in continuing the current street closures on Santa Cruz Avenue and Ryan's Lane. The Santa Cruz Avenue street closure is in the 600 block on the eastbound side of the street. The westbound continues to remain open to vehicle traffic, and Ryan's Lane is the portion between Crane and Escondido Lane, for context. I should have provided the commission with a map here. My apologies. A little bit more background, the previous outdoor dining initiatives. So as I mentioned, the TOP, that's the current program that essentially needs to end or ended with the end of the state of emergency. And so we're looking at staff level to develop the outdoor dining, streetery program to replace that. The city has a history of some outdoor dining prior to that with the 2015 Santa Cruz Avenue Cafe Pilot Program. So that started to utilize parking spaces in similar parklet formats that started popping up throughout the Bay Area at that time. The city created its own pilot program in 2015. And so if I can get to the next slide. So just go back one slide. So this evening, and the next slide, you saw a preview of it, we'll go into more of the specifics of the actual amendments themselves. But just to set a little bit of context of where we're at with this process. So as I mentioned tonight, it's the Planning Commission's review and recommendation on the proposed amendments to the downtown specific plan and the general plan. Following tonight's meeting, pending the outcome of the evening, the City Council would consider the Planning Commission's recommendation on the proposed amendments. So that staff is tentatively scheduled for August of this year. At that same meeting for the council to consider the proposed amendments to the specific plan and general plan, the council would also consider introducing the streetery ordinance. The street ordinance will be housed in Title 13 of the Menlo Park Municipal Code. So the ordinance itself is not in the zoning ordinance, so it does not go before the Planning Commission. It would be City Council reviewing and acting on that ordinance itself without the Planning Commission as a recommending body. I just want to clarify that. And that's because it's in Title 13 and deals with public right-of-way, and the Planning Commission's purview is typically or more solely on private property, with some limited exceptions to that. And let's see, where was I? So then, oh, sorry. So at that meeting, when the council considers introducing the street ordinance, they would also consider adoption through a separate resolution, the detailed streetery design guidelines and standards for the community to use in developing a streetery permit submittals to the city. Following the introduction to the street ordinance, the council would need to adopt the ordinance at a second reading. That would ultimately be in the August or September timeframe pending the outcome of the introduction of the ordinance. Once again, these dates are tentative and subject to change, but just to provide the commission with some timeline for where we're at this evening and what is ahead of us in this process. If the ordinance is adopted and the amendments to the general plan and specific plan are also adopted by the City Council, the City Council could consider through a separate resolution whether or not to close Santa Cruz Avenue or Ryan's Lane in a temporary or longer-term program. So these amendments this evening give the council the flexibility to consider those street closures, which it currently does not have due to inconsistency with the city's general plan circulation element and downtown specific plan. So if I can get the next slide. So as I've kind of alluded to or explained throughout in the staff report, provides more details on the proposed amendments to the general plan circulation element and specific plan that really intended to provide the City Council with flexibility to consider street closures that are currently in a temporary fashion downtown. You know, within the Main Street street classification, which is currently only Santa Cruz Avenue is designated as a Main Street in the city's circulation element, and local access alley street classification. So staff's proposal is to amend the Table 1 of the general plan circulation element to add a local access alley, which would be a subset of local access in the street classifications with some specifics to it regarding width and access and usability. And then also to allow through the language in the table, flexibility for the City Council to consider street closures within the Main Street and the new or added local access alley designation. And in addition, the specific plan amendments would allow the City Council to consider additional street closures on Santa Cruz Avenue, in addition to the Central Plaza concept that is currently in the downtown specific plan, as well as along other streets downtown, provided that these street closures are consistent with the general plan circulation element. As mentioned by Chair Doe in the overview of the agenda title, these amendments would be limited to minor circulation changes and modifications to public space. These would not increase the development potential of either the general plan or the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan. And if I can get the next slide. So once again, this evening, the recommended actions for the Planning Commission is to adopt two individual resolutions. Attachment A, which is to recommend the City Council approve amendments to the general plan circulation element, and then attachment B, which is to recommend the City Council approve amendments to the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan. And so with that, staff's available for clarifying questions. Thank you, Vaughn, for advancing the slide. And if there are no clarifying questions, would recommend that the Planning Commission open it up to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Prada. Any clarifying questions? Commissioner Eric?
Thank you. In going through the proposed changes, I believe the last one, there was a proposed change to Section 5, an addition of a footnote about on-street space reduction. And I didn't quite follow how the addition of that footnote related to the general thing that we're doing here with these amendments, so I was hoping you could quickly clarify.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. That's a great question. So in going through this specific plan and looking at the proposed amendments to the specific plan in this case, staff was looking for anywhere that the street closure might create inconsistencies within the plan. So a lot of the minor edits to the downtown specific plan are really to create consistency between all chapters of the downtown specific plan. So there's a table in the plan that you're referencing that identifies the on-street parking spaces within the downtown area. And so the street closures for the time that the street is closed would remove that on-street parking. So the clarification is that that number of spaces is subject to change, you know, and was kind of an estimate. So because there will be changes over time.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Great. Any other clarifying questions before we move to public comment?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Riggs?
So through the chair, if I could ask Mr. Prada, what connectivity value are we putting on Santa Cruz Avenue as a baseline question? For example, if you have stopped in at Walgreens and are now ready to go across to the new coffee shop by the train station, for the last three years, you have been unable to do that directly. You have to shunt over to either Oak Grove or Menlo, both of which are frequently backed up up to two blocks from El Camino. During the pandemic, losing that connectivity seemed a reasonable trade, particularly in the presence of reduced traffic. But as someone who regularly had to commute from the north end of Menlo Park to Portola Valley, there really was no clear shot through downtown. There simply was not a transportation corridor. One had to go up into Atherton and take Valparaiso, which we know works all right in the west direction, but in the easterly direction in the afternoon, you don't want that either. So how did we balance? And I'm not presupposing what that balance should be, but I'm curious what element of that connectivity is included in this proposal. And then following that, I'm going to ask whether this, as it's phrased, "street closure" applies to both sides of the street, say in the 600 block.
So let me start with the first question. So I think when looking at Santa Cruz Avenue, it's important to look at the street classification in Table 1 of the general plan. And so we're not proposing to amend the priorities that are identified in there in terms of mobility. But just to reiterate, the highest priority for Main Street in the general plan is pedestrian, with medium priority for vehicles, transit, and bicycle. So pedestrian priority is the highest priority identified in Table 1 for the Main Street Retail Street, which is what Santa Cruz Avenue downtown is designated as. And then if you...
All right. But that response seems to imply that we've already assumed that Santa Cruz Avenue, at least in one or two blocks, is essentially a mall. And I don't see pedestrian use even close to that level. And I do see a desire for people to connect in at least one direction, if not both. So for example, where clearly on a street pedestrian safety is more important than vehicular driver safety, it doesn't mean that we don't allow any vehicles on a given street. So again, in balance, where does the connectivity come in? And are we opening the door? Is this an invitation to close both in east and west directions of Santa Cruz?
So I think in terms of the street closure, I think it's important to recognize a couple of things. So one, this evening, we're not actually closing Santa Cruz Avenue. We're not closing Main Street. We're not closing Ryan's... Sorry. We're not closing Santa Cruz Avenue as Main Street in the proposed amendments, and we're not closing Ryan's Lane as the proposed local access alley. What these amendments would allow is for the City Council to consider those questions that Commissioner Riggs, you're raising regarding connectivity priorities, thinking through the city's general plan, goals, policies, priorities, as well as the council's goals for, and goals and priorities, excuse me, for the 2023 year, specifically, I think, as called out in the staff report, economic development being one of those. So those are policy decisions that the council would need to weigh when reviewing whether or not to adopt a resolution to actually close... need to weigh when reviewing whether or not to adopt a resolution to actually close the street on a longer term or permanent or more permanent style basis. In terms of the connectivity, the current layout of the street closure is for the eastbound traffic. And while it ultimately is a decision for the city council, I think there is a general desire to keep the westbound traffic for vehicles open. And as part of the street closure, maintain the existing closure along with some additional bicycle connectivity through the street. But those are things that still need to be worked out. And once again, this evening, the recommendation is, or the evaluation is the change in the circulation element to provide that flexibility for the council to consider those options and weigh those pros and cons with regard to any future street closures, whether it is on the 600 block of Main Street slash Santa Cruz, or any additional block in the downtown area when it's classified as Main Street. So I hope that clarifies a little bit of the focus this evening and the policy decisions that Commissioner Riggs, you are, rightly so, raising in terms of how the community should be looking at overall street closures in the downtown area.
All right. And related to that, the staff report seems to indicate that there is no circulation element downside to closing Santa Cruz Avenue. How do we justify that? Or to put it another way, of the three neighbors who have brought this subject up to me in the last year or so, how do I respond to them that closing Santa Cruz won't really affect how they go from one place to another? It's all in their heads.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that all of that question is appropriate for staff to respond to. I do think, though, that in terms of staff's evaluation of the proposed additional language in table one of the circulation element, it is, staff believes and has evaluated in the staff report, and it's evaluation of the proposed amendments, that, you know, the potential for the council to consider street closures on Santa Cruz Avenue here, you know, would be consistent with the Main Street street classification, specifically, you know, regarding the priority of the pedestrian mode of travel, but also the fact that the goal of the general plan here in table one is to, you know, create a high intensity pedestrian oriented retail street, which staff believes the flexibility in the amendment as proposed to give the council that flexibility, you know, does, is, or excuse me, is consistent with the circulation element. Once again, you know, I think Commissioner Riggs, a lot of the questions you're raising are broader policy decisions. You know, but I think staff's evaluation is that the proposal to allow for the flexibility is consistent with the general plan, is consistent with the specific plan, with the amendments as drafted incorporated.
All right. That's a fair answer. And I apologize for my rather light use of reference to my neighbors. My final question, and what I should do is bring them here and let them represent themselves. And then can you relate what interface you have had with the retailers on Santa Cruz regarding this closure?
Yeah, that's a good question. And admittedly, I don't have all the details. We do have, as part of the Streeterie program, our economic development consultant has been liaising with businesses. So I don't have specifics, but our HDL, our city's economic development consultant, has been discussing and reaching out to businesses. I'm happy to follow up separately, Commissioner Riggs, after the meeting. I just don't have those details right now.
All right. But thank you for your responses.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. So if there are no other clarifying questions, I'm looking, and I don't believe there are, let's, let's move to public comment. Ms. Mallathon, if you could inform us if we have any public commenters.
Thank you, Vice Chair Doe. As a reminder, members of the public can press the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please start, press star nine on your keyboard keypad to notify staff you have a comment. For any member of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another commenter, please inform staff at the beginning of the public comment, and staff will ensure that the other commenter speaks after you have finished your comment. At this point, I do not see a hand raised or speaker car.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and close public comment then. I think that was plenty.
Actually, just one person raised their hand.
Oh, fantastic.
All right. We have Randy Avolos. Sorry if I didn't pronounce your name properly. So you have three minutes. I'm going to go ahead and allow you to speak. Hold on.
Thank you, commissioners and staff. Good evening, everybody. Just to add some voice to those neighbors that were not calling in. So two bits is, yes, this use of the commons does favor one type of business over another, and that should be kept in mind. It's more of a policy issue. But also just have that context that, you know, for driving, some of you are driving as a luxury, which is nice if you can do that. For others, it's a necessity and it's a burden. And if we're talking about increasing density and below market rate housing for people who actually have to drive to work, something to keep in mind. That's all. Thank you for your time.
I do not see any other hand raised.
Give it a few more moments. Any other public commenters?
No, no more. No, no public commenter.
Okay, great. Well, let's close public comment and bring it back to the commission for a discussion and ultimately a vote on two resolutions to make a recommendation to city council. But would anyone like to start? Commissioner Schindler?
Thank you, Vice Chair Doe. Through the chair, question to staff about the total number of restaurants or eating establishments that are participating in, I guess, what we're now calling the Streeteries program, but was originally the temporary outdoor use permit. Are all of those businesses located on a main street, Santa Cruz Avenue, or an alley, the two street designations that we're talking about tonight and in this resolution?
Yeah, thanks. Commissioner Schindler, it's a good question. The short answer is no. Some of the Topes were located on the side streets that connected to Santa Cruz. Some have come and gone over, over the years since the Tope was enacted in 2020. But no, the Tope program did include businesses that were not specifically on Santa Cruz or within the alleys downtown.
Thank you. And through the chair, a follow-up question to that is, if we are intending to contemplate an extension or making permanent some of the street use, space use outside of Main Street or an alley, would this be the right time to include those other street types in the modifications to the general plan, and I guess, and the specific plan? Or is there, was there consideration of that? And if so, sort of where did, where did we come out?
Yeah, it's a good question. You know, I think the direction that the city staff received were to focus on the existing closures that were done during the COVID-19 pandemic and not to expand it beyond Main Street slash Santa Cruz Avenue and the alleys, or I should say, local access alley. There are alleys in the state that don't meet our criteria. So I want to be very cautious about using the right term versus a broader term for the alley. Certainly, the planning commission this evening could provide as part of his recommendation, additional direction to staff. That's something we could look at. There was, sorry, the city did prepare addendums to the program EIRs for both the downtown specific plan and the general plan. And so any direction to potentially look at additional changes to the general plan amendment would need staff to take a look at the environmental clearance for that as well. You know, certainly expanding potential street closures or flexibility for the council to consider street closures on more than just Main Street or the local access alleys, you know, could have other environmental effects that we would need to evaluate to determine, you know, whether or not an addendum is the appropriate mechanism. So there is a little bit of work that staff would need to do there than just amending simply, or excuse me, changing the proposed amendments to table one of the general plan. So hopefully that provides a little bit of context. But certainly something, if the planning commission's interested in including or discussing, it could be part of the motion and direction.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's very helpful context. To just sort of further expand on where the question, the origin of the question in my head, I want to be sure that we are adhering to the principles that this, this commission brings up on many occasions, which is being as equitable as possible across the various neighborhoods and locations across the city. The, the way that we're contemplating this, you know, is very much downtown focused on one side of town. I know that there's at least, I think that there is at least one other restaurant in the Willows that took play, took part in some of the opportunities to extend outdoor space that wouldn't be met by this, this definition. And I would probably just not, not, not suggest that we change the course of action that's been proposed tonight and what's in the staff report. But I would, I would like to be sure that we note that if this is successful and the city council considers making permanent or making extending, or let's just go with extending, some of the closures, that it gets equally considered for other locations across the city, which would require other street definitions to be added or modified, excuse me.
Through the chair, if I could clarify one thing, I realized through Commissioner Schindler's statements there, there is a difference between the street closures and the Streeterie program that the city's working on. So a Streeterie program could apply more broadly. That, that is looking at the ability for businesses, restaurants, excuse me, to apply to the city for a permit for a Streeterie, as we're calling it. It's an outdoor dining parklet, which could, which could be in the right of way and would utilize the parking spaces in front of that business. And so that would be different than a street closure. That, those could be located in areas beyond the potential extension of the existing current street closures on Santa Cruz and Ryan's Lane. So I want to clarify that there is that possibility, and those could be potentially elsewhere than downtown. Those are things that we're still working through. And I don't have all the details this evening, but I understand the restaurant you're speaking of. And I think that is something we're, we're taking into consideration. So there is a difference, though, between that Streeterie program and, and the street closure from the general plan, specific plan amendments this evening, that the planning commission's taking a look at.
Perfect. Thank, thank you for that reminder of, of the distinction between essentially, and I'm going to oversimplify, using the parking spaces versus closing the roads in terms of additional space. I think that was sort of my, my primary question. I'll simply at this time just say that I am supportive of putting into the hands of city council this discussion and evaluation. And so if, if the modifications to the general plan and the specific plan are the vehicle for doing that, I am supportive of that. And I will close off and hand it to others for comments. I'll stop short of making a motion because I think we've got plenty of opportunity to chat here.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you for that. The discussion related to Santa Cruz Avenue certainly isn't a recent discussion as it relates to how to increase the vibrancy of that particular corridor. It certainly took the pandemic and some of the impacts of that to cause some things to change along the way. I am certainly supportive of providing council the flexibility to think through what goes on on Santa Cruz Avenue. And it's the, you know, you've got hard goods, you've got F and B there, you've got different interests. And looking at this, I think comprehensively, I mean, if you think about it, if you put on, and this is the discussion that's been happening for years, as, you know, the concept of live, work, play, the concept of when Station 1300 happens, when the Stanford project happens, how do you get some vitality? How do you increase the daytime foot traffic, nighttime foot traffic, and in getting vitality there? And you've got, I mean, you've got competing, excuse me, you've got competing areas. You've got Stanford Mall, you've got, well, we've got Stanford Mall, we've got Redwood City, we've got Palo Alto. Each one of these competes for the dollar of the average consumer, of the, whether they're Menlo Park consumers, Atherton consumers, anyone in the general area. So how is it that Santa Cruz Avenue becomes or is something to somebody? And I think from a business development, economic development perspective, that's an important discussion to be having. So for that reason, without preordaining what will happen there, the impetus for doing something there has been a long time coming. And I think this is an extension of that. It was just brought on by some external forces. So I certainly, as we proceed through tonight's conversation, support the recommendation to look at these amendments. The part of this, which, which is a little bit of a bummer for, for my neighborhood, the Willows, is it's so hard to get to Santa Cruz Avenue. If you, in my, my particular neighborhood is bounded by Willow Road on one side and Middlefield Road on the other side. And you've got a really treacherous area between Woodland, Middlefield Road, and Willow Road from a vehicular standpoint, from pedestrian standpoint, from a bicycling standpoint. So the predominant destination for us in our neighborhood, I think if you polled it consistently over the years, and it's, you know, the same as for today, is downtown Palo Alto. Not because of the, the choices and things to do, mainly because it's easier to get to, mainly because if you want to be on a bike or if you want to be walking. It's, it's, not only is it not safe, but no one really goes to Menlo Park from my neighborhood unless you're in a car. So for, and even in a car, it's easier to go to downtown Palo Alto. But when the circulation element came out, and when the Transportation Master Plan came out, one of the real important components to this was creating these connectivity nodes, as they were called, connectivity network. And there was going to be some connectivity that was contemplated for, from, for my neighborhood to get it more accessible to downtown Menlo Park. That hasn't happened yet. So there's a part of this discussion, which is, yes, I think it's the right thing to revitalize Santa Cruz Avenue for, from my neck of the woods, revitalize it, but it may not have an impact on us because we can't get there. So I would love to see as part of this discussion, making Santa Cruz Avenue accessible to those that are east of, certainly El Camino, or east of Middlefield Road, to be able to get there and enjoy it. Because otherwise, it's this, except for the guild, which folks are getting to more and more, it becomes a, an abstract conversation about what's happening downtown from a destination standpoint, because we simply aren't, aren't going there with the regularity I know that my neighbors would like. So yes, I support this, but it's a bummer because we don't really have access to it. we don't really have access to it. So I'll leave my comments for there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Commissioner Riggs.
I very much appreciate the input from staff a few minutes ago. And I think I would like to respond that we are being asked to modify an existing ordinance in order to open the door for city council to close a couple of streets. I don't, I'm not aware of anybody holding particular value to being able to go down Ryan's Court. I know I haven't missed it. But I don't think the same thing applies to Santa Cruz Avenue. I go occasionally down to Santana Row, and they have closed off one of the blocks there. And yet, amazingly, the adjacent block still has motor vehicle traffic. And that's an environment where, adjacent to the closed block, you have a three-level parking garage. Actually, there are two of them. We don't have a parking garage. We zoned for it back in 2012, and we haven't done a thing about it. And while I'm not one of them, I understand there are people who decide, well, let's not go downtown to Menlo Park at lunchtime. There isn't any parking. I don't particularly agree with that, but there doesn't appear to be enough parking. And it's quite evident from the small amount of permit requests to upgrade Santa Cruz, that as a retail space that does not have a parking option, it has a parking option in code, but because there's no parking structure, there's no parking option in reality, there's no financial justification to take a 5,000-square-foot building, knock it down, and build another 5,000-square-foot building up in the air so that you can park underneath it. It just doesn't pencil out, and it never will. Part of this stalemate is to do with the makeup of council, not just this year, but two years ago, five years ago, six years ago. And the makeup of council does change. And there will be times when we think four out of five council members are the best thing that's ever happened for the city. Let's open the door for council to make any decisions they want. And four years later, we may be saying, who the heck said that council could make any decision they want about what goes down on Santa Cruz? There used to be an ordinance. Sort of reminds me of our federal monetary regulations that are always pulled back significantly just a couple of years before recession. So just for me, this isn't the right time or the right move to open the door for the modifications that are described here in this staff report. I think if the staff report referred only to eastbound Santa Cruz and only on the one block, because I would like to support and maintain the two restaurants, one in particular, that have invested so much in our downtown and in that part of the street, if that were the case, I think I would be much more supportive. So just to share, if it's not obvious, I can support part of this calendar item. But at this time, I think to make both changes would be inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question through the chair's staff that builds on some of the points that Commissioner Riggs, thoughtful points triggered for me. I think of the two major things that are proposed in the definition of the various classifications of streets in the general plan, the addition of an alleyway is a no-brainer. It's not in there today. So if it's, if we don't add it, it cannot be regulated. But there is a definition of Main Street. If the definition of Main Street wasn't changed to explicitly call out that it can be fully or partially closed, could it still be fully or partially closed by, through some other mechanism?
It's a good question. So it would be inconsistent to close Main Street, i.e. Santa Cruz Avenue, to vehicle traffic, given the current circulation element. So a longer-term closure beyond the temporary closure that was put in place during COVID-19 would not be consistent with the general plan. At the direction of the council in the discussion in February regarding the streetery program, staff have researched and evaluated and determined that to provide that ability to continue with the existing street closure, the general plan would need to be amended. And so those are the amendments before the Planning Commission this evening. So short answer, no. Longer answer is a little bit of that backstory that I just gave.
Thank you. Thank you for helping me scratch that itch. Thanks.
Commissioner Farrick.
Thank you. Really appreciate the thoughtful comments and questions people have asked. It's definitely food for thought. In general, I'm, I think, you know, before hearing anybody else, my inclination was to support this because, you know, in times when city council needs to have some flexibility to do some obvious things, they need to have it. And like, then it doesn't create the problem that many cities, including ours, had by having to kind of rush and set up something in 2020. And it had already been on the radar for years, as staff member Prada shared in 2015 and beyond. So I guess, you know, so I feel less concerned that there would be some sort of an abuse of this power that council would have. But I do agree that, you know, with Commissioner Riggs, that it's important to really understand the ramifications, to see if there is a safeguard that could be put in that makes sense. You know, I don't want to exclude other parts of the city, too. When Commissioner Barnes was describing getting to downtown, I was like, well, I'm already halfway there when I get to you. So, and I like that we have a nice downtown, and it's nice to go to. I was there this morning, and it was lovely. So I guess, you know, that's a rambling way of saying I really appreciate all the comments. And I guess the question then is, you know, I'm supportive of this, of this proposed amendment recommendation to council. And the question is then, is there anything in, maybe it's a question for our council, that it would be a concern around the safeguards or power that a council would have to do something that's not in the best interests of the community with this?
So maybe I can start and then look to our city attorney for some additional input if needed. I think one thing to clarify, though, is that these amendments do not close the streets, but require the plan, sorry, the city council to consider those street closures and adopt additional resolutions. So those street closures, to the extent wherever, when, how they occur, would be reviewed by the city council. There would be the need for the public review, for the council to adopt, you know, at a public meeting, the street closure by resolution. So it's certainly, at this point, the council would still need to review each individual street closure. And at that time, there can be a discussion about, you know, parameters put on that closure, time period, design of the closure, whether it's two-way or one-way traffic, like pet improvements, you know. So there are a number of things the council and the community could consider through that discussion, through that process, to determine whether to close any individual segment of Santa Cruz Avenue, i.e. Main Street, or the public alleys downtown, the local access alleys, call them that. So hopefully, that helps provide a little bit of context.
Yeah, for sure. And it sounds, so the short way of saying it is, whatever the proposal is, there would be a public process that businesses, community members could weigh in on. It's not that they suddenly have the ability to just to do whatever changes. I think, I know, when you were talking, Commissioner Riggs, it reminded me of the possibly considered ill-fated pilot for street furniture. And that might be what is on your mind. But no. But I guess, you know, I think that had public process. And I think, you know, that's part of the work of a city is to, let's try things, let's see how this works. And then, you know, change course if it's not benefiting enough members of the community. So yeah, I guess I'll leave it there and just say that this change makes sense to me. And I do think that these decisions, given that there is the safeguard of a public hearing, you know, belong in the council's hands.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. I am, several times a week, have been going up to San Mateo, to the north central neighborhood. It's sort of roughly their bellhaven. And one of the improvements that were made there with public hearings was to take away the parking in front of the homes on North Humboldt, so that there could be added a bike lane on each side. In eight months, I have actually yet to see a single bicycle on the bike lanes, morning, evening, or lunchtime. But I'm told that several blocks away, they do exist. In the meantime, part of the same public process, they added bulbous, which decreases the distance that you have to walk to cross the street. Now, there's not a lot to cross on Humboldt because it's county or school property on the other side, but, you know, maybe it's busy at 3:00 p.m. The thing is that the bulbous use the same space as the bike lane. So they striped the bike lane to divert out into the middle of the road at each intersection and then come back again. It is the nuttiest conclusion that you could ever see, but I'm sure it had all the traffic analysis and design and $100,000 consultant fees that are appropriate for a public process. So I'm simply not as confident about public process, whether it's 20 years ago or 18 months ago. So I would like to suggest, I realize that there's impetus and desire here. And I see, although we don't have a Menlo Park Chamber of Commerce, we have a county chamber of commerce, and the representative is here, and has no objections, apparently, to this revision. So in what I would call modified support, I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution that is Attachment A for the circulation element, and adopt the resolution that would be Attachment B for the specific plan that would allow alley closures and would allow the closure of one side of El Camino, as is currently used, and the need and desire and financial backing are demonstrated on Santa Cruz on the eastbound side. And I think that's the 600 block. And I think that would allow our temporary situation to be, if city council so desires, made into a permanent situation. And if the time comes when there's interest in simply closing an entire block of Santa Cruz and trying out a pedestrian mall, that there be an appropriate process at that time. And I guess I'll be so bold as to suggest that the seven of us at least get a chance to hold one of our public hearings. So that's my motion. And through the chair, if I could look to staff, is that motion, with that modification, a legally acceptable action for us?
So let me just read back what I have first, and then we can answer the second part. So it's to approve or recommend approval to the city council, the proposed circulation element amendments in Attachment A, with the modification that the Main Street designation would only allow for one-way street closures in the Main Street. And is it also only the 600 block? I was unsure if that was only-
Yes, I think we have a demonstrated need there. And since 2012, we just have not had the investment in Santa Cruz Avenue. And again, you know, just having had three different clients on that street, I know what the issue is each time. We can't knock down one building and build another one if we don't have parking. And that's at least a half dozen years away. So I think this is realistic for this time and this reality.
So just to confirm, it's-
The 600 block.
Sorry? 600 block? Yeah, okay. So the recommendation is one-way street closure and only within the 600 block of Santa Cruz Avenue?
Yeah. And I don't know if you actually have a separate nomenclature. That might be the 650 block, right?
I think we understand that we could, staff could, instead of using addresses bounded by the two side streets, we can work on that separately outside the motion. I think we understand the request. I think, unless the city attorney disagrees, I think the Planning Commission can consider that amendment and deliberate on whether or not to incorporate that into its recommendation or adoption of Attachment A with the modification. Just want to confirm, Attachment B would possibly also need to be modified. If the Planning Commission is interested in adding this modification, I think we would want potentially direction from the Planning Commission to allow staff to modify the proposed amendments to the downtown specific plan for consistency with this revised modification to Attachment A. If it's, we can certainly have that discussion, but I think we would need time to work that out between Planning Commission and city council meetings. So if Planning Commission directs staff to make it consistent, we can do that if this motion is ultimately adopted by the Planning Commission.
Of course. I appreciate your bringing that up.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs, for your modified support. I think you called it and proposed first. I was just going to make a comment that these amendments wouldn't actually, Mr. Prada pointed out, wouldn't actually go towards creating more street closures, but just give city council that policy flexibility. And so as described in the staff report, I found, I could support that. I'm not sure I'm ready to, and I appreciate the caution and the experience you bring observing, you know, other situations throughout the peninsula, Commissioner Riggs. Well, I'll just stop. I saw Commissioner Farrick, your hand go up.
Thank you. I think I was-
I think I was, I was, I'm going to try to express a similar thing in that I thought one of the nice ways through these amendments is that flexibility they would get. I wouldn't want to pin a general plan amendment on the current location of a couple of restaurants. They will come and go over the decades, and I think there needs to be flexibility, planning for where these sorts of things should happen, but not specifically geared toward a current business that's there, because the, that can change, that will change, for better and for worse.
Through the chair, would you have an alternative, then, that might avoid a full street closure, but not necessarily stick it to the 600 block?
I didn't consider that, you know, so I don't have a, like, an alternative. I guess my concern with limiting it to a very specific location doesn't give the flexibility in case some phenomenal, another restaurant down the next block or the black next block, you know, why wouldn't there be that flexibility? When, yeah, you know, with a general plan amendment, I think it's an important thing to kind of look to the long term. So, yeah, I don't have an amendment to your amendment, I just have concerns about the amendment, and I didn't want to create too narrowly specific of a change, that then this doesn't really achieve much as the community and businesses change over.
Thank you, Commissioner Farick. I think you expressed what I was hinting at. And Commissioner Riggs, I hear you about the bikes and the bulbous, but I still have con-
Oh, you should see it.
Well, I just-
With the green stripes that march over to the middle of the road and then they march back again.
Well, I won't, Commissioner Riggs.
So I agree with the input of both the chair and Commissioner Schindler, so I would, I mean, Farick. So I would like to, with the help of staff, reword that, where the intent is to maintain some level of traffic flow, and yet respond to the investments of restaurateurs. I'm not at all confident that we will be so supportive of a future restaurant that we will let them take half of the street, in addition to the sidewalk and the parking. But I certainly do appreciate flexibility when you're talking about zoning ordinance. And if there's a way that you can suggest, perhaps, that would not tie it to a specific block, but rather express the preference to keep traffic moving on at least one side of the block. I think that would allow things to progress in the future, you know? With luck, they progress.
Through the chair, is that a question for staff to provide some guidance?
Through the chair, oop, I may have one idea on that.
Please.
Like, if there was just an additional bullet point that sort of states that expression of preference to basically not ignore the needs of traffic circulation and to try to keep one lane open, is that, would that suffice to kind, but then leave the rest kind of more as it is? Is that what you're, okay.
Yeah, I mean, among us, I'm a little concerned that we're already restricting traffic, but, you know, again, the retail community hasn't stepped forward, at least at this hearing. You read about it in the paper from other communities, but, yeah, just in an effort to be supportive to this flexibility.
Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you for that. I guess I'm struggling a little bit with a first or a second, and I guess kind of the direction we're going in. I feel comfortable providing, whether it's the economic, so I don't know that restricting vehicular traffic is a good idea. I don't know that restricting vehicular traffic is a bad idea. And frankly, it's not my purview to weigh in on that. I see this particular exercise as an exercise in allowing the, a development of a best practice for what the community wants for this particular area to come and be surfaced. And I think tipping the scales in terms of what might or may not be a good idea is, in fact, tipping the scales prior to determinations of what is or is not a good idea. So for that reason, if your motion, if the motion that I believe is on the table, subject to an amendment, dies, I'm happy to make a motion to recommend the proposed amendments for the general plan, circulation element, and downtown specific plan, as per the staff report. But let me let yours either live or die, and then I'll come in behind it and just say that the, my thinking behind it is to let this, let the concepts come up and then be debated and fleshed through in a way that is representative of the community, as opposed to particular preferences that we may or may not have on this particular dais. So having said that, I'll wait to see what the next move is.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Barnes. I do want to return to a point Mr. Parada you made, too, that if we're looking at adherence to the general plan, the definition of the Main Street prioritizes pedestrian mobility. So, you know, whether or not, I think what Commissioner Barnes is saying, that we don't may not have the purview to say, indicate our preference, but to evaluate it according to that definition that's in the general plan. But with that, there's a first on the table, I believe, from Commissioner Riggs, to, and I understand that we're doing this together, is that correct? To adopt a resolution to amend the general plan and the specific plan. And I, forgive me, your amendment is to not pin it to a specific geographic location, but-
But to maintain, maintain at least a one-directional traffic flow.
Maintain a direction, one direction of traffic flow.
As opposed to full closure of a block, which is, that's a whole discussion. So, yeah, that is the preference.
Thank you. So that's the first that we have on the table from Commissioner Riggs. Discussion, or-
I just have a clarifying question. There was a version of the motion that I think read something like, changing the amendment such that, instead of the amendment saying that a full street could be closed, only one side of the street could be closed. This version of the amendment seems to be not that, but rather expressing a preference, but allowing the language as it exists in the amendment to remain the same, and adding a preference statement. And I'm curious which version of the motion we're discussing.
That was an astute observation, it was also an astute insertion by Mr. Parada, which I have to appreciate. It does widen the flexibility of city council, but allows us to express a concern. Yes. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Does that mean that we're on, the latter version is the one that we're, that, okay.
Can I ask a question through the chair? Question for staff. Oh, my gosh, I had it in my head a second ago. Apologies. So if, so I'm looking, I'm just kind of trying to scan the Connect Menlo, El Camino specific plan for the circulation, the whole, you know, the circulation element is 50 pages. I guess where I'm going with this is, is this already addressed in the sense of, as a council were to consider a thing before it, a proposed half-street closure, or whatever it is, a part of a streetery program or a streetery application, would, they would already be required, or it would already be baked in, to have circulation addressed writ large, including auto traffic, pedestrian, bikes, et cetera, all the various modes just for circulation? So I guess where I'm going is I'm trying to determine if the amendment to the amendment is necessary, or if it's already part of the process.
Yeah, so it's a good question. I think it is an opportunity for staff to clarify. So the streetery program is not dependent upon the street closures. It is one facet that provides some flexibility for the council to consider street closures that potentially allow for expansion of the streetery uses beyond the parking spaces or for other changes. So I know we've been focused this evening on the restaurants on the 600 block. There is also a publicly available seating area that is not tied to a restaurant, that any member of the community, you know, can use, you know, throughout the day. It is also the location of the Von Marsh Market on Wednesday evenings, so the outdoor market. So while that's not super germane to your question, I'm just trying to kind of provide some context in terms of the streetery program is independent, but there is some overlap, if that makes sense. It's kind of an awkward way to say it, but the streeteries would be evaluated case-by-case basis against the streetery design guidelines and standards, and against the allowed areas that the streeters would be allowed to take up in terms of the number of parking spaces, where those are located on the street. But that would, that takes into account bicycle, vehicle, pedestrian access around those. It also does remove parking spaces, or would remove parking spaces for those streeteries specifically. That is an independent project, but also does have some basis in the street closure, general plan amendments, to allow for some of the existing expanded streeteries to be maintained, as well as some of the existing uses of the street closure. And to the commission's discussion this evening, it is written in a way that allows for that flexibility for the council to consider other full, partial, you know, on a temporary or long-term or permanent basis, street closures.
Right, so I guess the question, though, is, as they consider whatever the proposal is, circulation would be part of what they consider?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think I missed that part of your question, and I provided a longer answer.
I added a whole bunch of fluff around it, so.
So that might get to a point that staff made previously, where as part of any street closure, the city council would be evaluating that closure as it relates to circulation at large, being vehicles, pedestrian, bicyclists, as well as any other uses within that closed street that may either conflict or enhance the circulation. So that would be considered as part of any street closure, as part of that public review by the council, as part of the consideration of their adoption of a potential resolution to close any portion of Main Street or local-access alleys, if those are ultimately adopted by the council as amendments to the general plan. This is a step in the process this evening to provide a recommendation for the council's consideration.
Okay, so that was, yes, in other words, they would consider circulation with a proposal, as it's written in the staff report?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it sounds like we have a first on the table from Commissioner Riggs. I don't think I heard, we don't have a second.
You realize in Mountain View, they have a similar process in their closing Castro Street.
Thank you, Vice Chair Doe. I am unable to provide a second and would not, at this point, can just signal that I wouldn't be comfortable supporting the modified version. I do, for two reasons, two big reasons, two main reasons. One is that, for all of the excellent reasons that have been given here tonight, whether they're circulation, or economic, or thinking about future development of retail, future development of parking, I think the entity that has the most insight into all of those things and the authority to weigh them, again, with each other, as well as input from the community, from staff, from entities even outside of Menlo Park, I think the city council and the supporting mechanisms around them are the right place. That's sort of the nucleus of all of that. So it is a super complicated and sophisticated question, and I can't think of a better vehicle for having those issues surfaced, discussed, and ultimately decided. And maybe I suffer from a lack of imagination, but I can't think of one. The second reason that I support it is because I don't want to, it's melodramatic, but death by a thousand paper cuts of change, right? If we sort of introduce incremental little changes and we have to go back through a four-step process that involves the general plan and the specific plan, every time we want to make a modification to one street definition, and we go a half-street at a time, or one street type at a time, it just slows things down. And I think we've, we have enough issue with bureaucracy, particularly as it relates to evolving and innovating and enlivening the downtown and El Camino corridor, that I'm reluctant to do that. With that, I will say that my personal preference is to not have all of Santa Cruz closed. I'm also very wary of the word "permanent" in all of this language. I don't believe permanent, a permanent closure would be a good idea under any circumstances. I think we should always contemplate street decisions like that on a three-, five-, 10-year time horizon. But I'm going to leave it in there, again, of faith in the process. So there's, that's for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Again, I think I feel the same way. So I'm not quite sure how to, Commissioner Barnes? Apologize.
No, I was just turning it back on. Commissioner Riggs was giving me a collegial courtesy and pointing to me, because I'm happy to make a motion with the express intent of not to cut off any additional discussion. And if it sounds like we're ready, we should just let a motion live or die as it lives or dies, and we can move on and, you know, iterate from there. So I'm happy to make a motion, but right before I do that, I do, I do want to just stick my hand in the pile for iteration and innovation, and I think trying different stuff is important, and I think the city staff, trying different things, some stuff works, some stuff doesn't. Some closures may work, some closures may not, things can be changed, but I really want to add my voice to whatever it is that folks are thinking up or cooking up to get some vitality in downtown Menlo Park. Let's do it, let's think about it, let's have at it. And it's okay to make a mistake, because we can unwind it. It's not, there's not going to be no cost to it, but better to have looked at other things, tried something and made a mistake than not tried anything at all. So for that reason, I am comfortable in this particular area, with this particular subject matter, saying, we've got good staff, we've got smart council, let's try some things. So with that in mind, I am going to make a motion that we, and I'm going to pull this up to make sure I get it. I'm going to recommend, that we recommend the city council, the adoption of the proposed amendments to the City of Menlo Park general plan, circulation element, and the El Camino Real downtown specific plan. So that is, I'm recommending the proposed amendments. And we can check with staff to see if that's, it's a recommendation, so I don't know that it is, has to be that quite defined, but that's my, I'll just put that on the table as a first.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I blanked out there for my, you're the- Yes, and I'm sorry, I blanked out there for my, your motion is to adopt the resolution as...
I don't know that's a resolution, because it's a recommendation.
Sorry, resolution recommending.
Yes, not to do break, yes.
Of course, thank you. Adopt a resolution recommending the city council amend the circulation element of the general plan and El Camino.
Yes, there's two pieces here. There is the general plan circulation element, and there's the DSP downtown specific plan, and we are being asked this evening to contemplate the proposed amendments to both of those.
Yes.
And to both of those, I will make a motion that we recommend the city council the proposed amendments as put forth by staff. That's my first. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes.
Commissioner Schindler.
I will second the resolutions that cite date that we would recommend to city council, the modifications to circulation plan of the general, circulation element of the general plan and the downtown specific plan.
First, from Commissioner Barnes, and a second from Commissioner Schindler, to adopt a resolution recommending that the city council amend the circulation element of the general plan and amend the El Camino Real downtown specific plan as recommended by staff. If there's no further discussion, then let's go for a vote. Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Eric.
I will vote yes, and I also just want to say I appreciate both what Commissioner Schindler and Commissioner Barnes said. I thought that it was well put, and I agree with them.
Thank you. Commissioner Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
No.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes. I will also vote yes, so that's five yeses and one no, and the resolution making that recommendation to city council passes.
Through the chair, may I make a comment?
Certainly.
I know the item is over, I just wanted to just comment that the robust discussion was really helpful for me to understand this more fully, so I appreciate all the perspectives and historic and future, future-proof and otherwise.
And I agree with that.
Agreed.
You are both, you're all three different on that. Thank you.
So with that, I believe that we can close item F2, and that brings us to G informational items. Mr. Parata.
Thank you. Yes, we do have a number of updates from staff. I just want to provide a little bit of a heads-up for the planning commission on some items that we're tracking for the two meetings in August. So the commission is scheduled to meet on August 14th and the 28th. We are tracking potentially the initial actions, which would include some final actions and some recommended actions from the planning commission to the city council on the 123 Independence Drive project. Exact dates are still in flux for all these, so I'm not saying for sure on the 14th or the 28th at this point, but these are things we're tracking. We're also tracking potentially the final actions and certification of the EIR for the 1125 O'Brien Drive project at one of the August meetings, and also some potential ordinance modifications or amendments, excuse me, to the zoning ordinance to facilitate electrification of existing buildings. Once again, that's probably either the 14th or 28th, they can't commit at this point, but we'll know more at the end of this week when we publish or send our mailed notices out. And then lastly, we are tracking a study session for the housing element zoning ordinance updates. That is likely to be on the 14th. I feel pretty confident providing that date. It is still tentative, but looking at our workflow for the housing element update and the implementation with the zoning ordinance amendments, it's likely to go to the planning commission as a study session on the 14th. So stay tuned. That completes my announcements for the items we're tracking. Happy to answer any questions. Once again, those are tentative, a lot of large projects that staff is working to advance through the planning commission review this summer.
Any quick, Commissioner Barnes.
So I'll make sure this is not for discussion, but I'll just float it into the ether. I'm wondering if there's any support amongst our colleagues here to begin planning commission at 6:00 PM as opposed to 7:00 PM. Council starts at 6:00. It had been floated to this body, and I, for one, was like, nope, got to do it at 7:00. And for selfish reasons, A, I was coming back from the office, it was tough to get here at time, and B, I had a kid that was six or five or seven or eight, whatever. I think from my personal perspective that starting at 6:00 would serve us to get out earlier and improve the quality of life and, you know, make it easier to serve on this body. That's my personal opinion. We don't need to have discussion on it, but if it's something that this body wanted to take up, I certainly think it's worth considering. In other words, starting at 6:00 versus at 7:00 in the evening. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Through the chair, one additional information item. Just want to make sure that the commission's aware that staff is available. Is there any questions along for G1, the summary of the environmental justice and safety elements? I jumped to staff updates without asking if the commission had any questions on that item.
Questions for Mr. Parata? Commissioner... Sorry. Commissioner Eric.
Was there an...
It's actually not. Oh, it's not on this item? So if you want to go first, Commissioner Schindler, that's fine, but it made me, reminded me of a different topic I want to ask about.
Thank you. I did have a follow-up question, and it may have been something that I missed in the nuance of listening to the meeting, because I was not here for this particular discussion. I know that we, the next step is to have an additional public hearing after some revisions have been made to the policies and programs. What wasn't clear to me is when the roughly 125 programs that were listed in the environmental justice report go through that framework, right? So there were a number of different evaluations that were presented as columns in a sheet. Once they have been prioritized, scored, and assessed, and brought back to, I guess, to us in the fall, will there still be, I'm going to try and simplify this, will there still be 125 possible programs, or will, through the prioritization process, some things actually essentially be struck from the list?
So I'm going to, thank you for the question. I'm going to turn that over to Calvin Chan, our senior planner, who's been leading the environmental justice and safety element component to the housing element update. So Calvin's available for questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler, through the chair. Staff is working through that refinement process right now, and we, perfectly honestly, we have, we have that same question as we are working with our consultants and also continuing to do our community outreach. We're looking at ways to streamline and reduce the quantity of the policies and programs while still maintaining the overall feedback that the community provided. We do certainly want to provide an action framework that is prioritized and also manageable in terms of implementation, and certainly, as you pointed out, having over 100 policies and programs, one may feel that that could be a bit too, too much to accomplish in that, in that timeframe. So we are, we are still working on that. We are in close contact with M Group, our lead project consultant, as well as communicating with Change Lab Solutions, who is a leader in this field, and also working closely with climate resilient communities, our community outreach partner, to continue and refine that framework. So we look forward to presenting to the planning commission, as well as the city council, our refined work at an upcoming study session in the fall.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And if I may, very briefly, I swear it'll be brief, express a preference for having some way of conveying to the public the, the sort of, an assessment of, well, let's see. The framing is that in a perfect world with unlimited resources, we do everything on that list, but we don't have unlimited resources in staff, other resources, and funding. And I think it's very helpful to be able to present a categorization of projects that we think we are very, very confident we have the resources to do. Those are the things at the top of our list. A set of programs that we might be able to do, given if there were incremental resources or depending on how things play out. And then a bottom tier that essentially says, we do think these things are important, but we are lacking the resources to do them. And I think it's, it's good practice for us to give that public visibility into what could be accomplished with, with more resources, not necessarily for the exact purpose of the environmental justice report, but as framing for future discussions about, for example, revenue generation strategies, as framing for discussions about staffing or other consulting relationships. So if I, if I were given a preference, I would love to see all the programs still on a list, but with a very distinct tiering in them related to the resources that we have. Thank you.
Shall I ask my question?
Through the chair, if I may, just real quick, we need to be mindful of the fact that this is an informational item, so appreciate Commissioner Schindler's input. I do want to be cognizant of not moving too far beyond a intended one-way communication with the opportunity to answer clarifying questions on the communication. So prior to any other questions, just want to make sure that we are mindful of that. We really shouldn't have too many discussions or a dialogue on, on the merits at all here or any of the content, but rather just any clarifying, clarifying questions, willing to continue that a little bit longer, but we do need to be careful about, about going too far here. So hopefully that helps with a little bit of context to just ask clarifying questions specifically and deny anything further.
Thank you, Mr. Parata, for keeping us on track. Commissioner Eric.
Thank you, Chair Doe, or Acting Chair Doe, however you'd like to go today. As it relates to the housing element, I'm curious if we can get a status update because of the recent newspaper article about a proposed project that I know is way too early for us to actually consider the project itself in any near, near future. However, the builder's remedy was being mentioned as, and so I guess, like, a status update on what, of the housing element update being approved and, and a primer on, you know, I'd like to request a primer on the builder's remedy as it relates to mixed-use projects at some near-time planning commission meeting, because I'm already getting questions from the community members that saw that newspaper article. So would love some info on things related so that I'd at least have some better foundational facts to know.
Yeah, I think I'll just respond to the housing element component briefly, and then I think anything else we can follow up separately as appropriate and as agendized. We're currently in the HCD review phase of our revised housing element, so it's a 60-day review period that we're currently in, waiting comments back or completion of their review. Happy answering that part. I think beyond that, I think it'd be getting too far down away from this topic.
Okay. And if there is, could there, I would like to request that maybe it's agendized or sent as an informational item in a packet to just have a better understanding of the builder's remedy as it relates to mixed-use projects?
Yeah, we can look into that separately. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you for that. And I have a question for Mr. Chan, and it does relate to G1. Mr. Chan, was there any discussion related to the environmental justice element that linked community amenity resources to the programs or potential programs to be considered through the environmental justice report program?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Barnes, through the chair. At the joint study session of June 20th, there was some discussion between some planning commission members as well as city council about potential funding sources. Community amenities was raised as something for staff to look into, and as part of our next study session that we'll be bringing back to the planning commission, we will be looking at ways to identify different funding sources, whether they be grants, different things to look at at the local, federal, or state level to help really action these items. And community amenities is one of the things that we will be looking into.
And I believe this is an okay question, given the agendized content. Given that the community amenity list is scheduled to be read and approved at the next city council meeting, will the timing work out so that what is contemplated, so there will be provisions within, there'll be allowances made for potentially as community, environmental justice funding from the community amenities list, if in fact it gets approved? And my recollection was, these programs were not included when we first saw the community amenities list. So it's a sequencing question, and are you able, are you able to answer that?
So I think I'll, I'll start, and I do want to be mindful of...
Thank you.
...deviating too far here. This really, this is going beyond the scope of an informational item, but to clarify as a comment that staff mentioned previously at this meeting, the updates in the beginning, the community may's list was adopted by a resolution by the city council on July 11th, so that list is active. The second reading of the community amenities ordinance amendments, which were really intended to clarify the appraisal instructions or the requirements for the creation of some modifications to the appraisal instructions, the timing for that appraisal in terms of the date of value that we discussed last July 11th, or sorry, the June meeting, excuse me, and also the identification that the council would adopt community may regulations, but those are separate from the list. The list is adopted and active.
Thank you for that.
There's no more questions on G informational items? Well, Commissioner Eric.
Sorry. Back to G2. Am I allowed to do that? Yeah, okay. I guess this is a question for staff. Commissioner Barnes brought up a point earlier around the timing of this meeting. Am I allowed to make a comment on that, or do I need to not?
I think that's going to start a dialogue. Yeah, sorry, Commissioner Eric. I think we can poll the commission separately on that, and if we need to have a discussion, we can agendize that. I think that that's, that's going to start an issue here, yeah.
I have no further comments.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you for following up then on that individually with the commission. That's appreciated. So with that, we'll close G informational items and adjourn this meeting.